He's gonna ask before I'm ready. Yep. Okay.
Okay. Entertainer motion to open zoning board of appeals.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Jeff?
Hi.
Hi.
Marguerite?
Hi.
Emile?
Hi.
Okay, let's take up the first case, which is case number forty-three thirty-three.
Motion to open case number forty-three thirty-three. Second.
All in favor? Marguerite?
Hi.
Emile?
Hi.
Gary?
Hi.
Okay. Public hearing will be held in town hall, conference room B, three oh one, room three oh one, third floor, ten Pearl Street.
That's already been read in, right?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, you don't have to read that in.
Okay. This is on, on the garage at eighty-two Dean Road. And Marguerite, you brought this up, so I'm writing in reference to the address above about the opinion of the firefighting operation in the possible building of a twenty-four by twenty-four garage. I was contacted by the homeowner, Alan Bryan, he told me he needed an opinion from the fire department at the request of the ZVA. I then spoke to Marguerite Mitchell about this garage application. Her concern was the fifteen-foot space between structures. She asked me to reach out to with an opinion. According to Mr. According to Mr. Bryan, there will be eight feet, eight feet, seven inches distance from the edge of the garage to the property line on the left side after the garage is built. I have not seen any building or plot plan, so I am going off his word. I do not know if there will be fifteen feet between the two neighboring structures, regardless of property lines, if the garage is built. As far as the firefighting operations are concerned, eight feet, seven inches, there's plenty of room for us to advance hoses and ladders in case of an emergency. I understand the need for the fifteen feet to protect the neighboring structures from the radiant heat in case of fire. I hope this helps with making a decision with this application. Captain James Rush, Stoughton Fire Department. So. That, does that take care of that, Marguerite?
So I think it was a combination of that letter and then, it's my understanding, the building inspector went out to the property and took some pictures, which are also included in the file now, and then they also researched the abutting property and discovered that the abutting property provided a plot plan when it built that addition. That shows that addition being located sixteen feet away from their property line. So with all of that information, it appears that there's, to me, we have now in the record sufficient information to know that there's definitely fifteen feet, more than fifteen feet of space between the proposed structure and the abutting property's structure, and that addresses the fire safety concern that I have.
In that case, what's the wish of the board?
So we have to make a, a motion.
We have to make a motion to grant?
Well, it's good to make a finding.
A finding.
So I make a motion that we determine, I can't remember what this property, where it's nonconforming.
Where what?
Do we remember where the property is nonconforming?
Oh, nonconforming. Front yard setback. Oh, wait.
Yeah. It is nonconforming in the front.
Yep, front yard setback.
Okay, so I'll make a finding that we determine that the proposed, I'm sorry, that the existing structure is nonconforming with regard to the front yard setback, and that the proposed garage will create a new nonconformity on the, for the side yard setback, but that the proposed garage, even with the new nonconformity, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure.
Is there a second?
No, second, second.
Okay, Jeff seconded. All in favor?
Hi.
Emile?
Hi.
Marguerite?
Hi.
An aye. Okay. Who's gonna write that decision?
I will write that decision.
Was that a, do we need to make a decision? I think we just had a find.
Finding, okay.
That's, yeah, how we make those decisions.
Okay. That case, uh, well, the next case, which is? Next case is, is it a garage? Uh, there's a garage. Forty-three thirty-four.
Should make a motion. Make a motion, open case number forty-three thirty-four.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Marguerite?
Hi.
Emile?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. This one I gotta read in. Public hearing will be held in town hall, conference room B, room three oh one, third floor, ten Pearl Street on September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. At seven thirty PM on a petition of Travis Mitchell, case number forty-three thirty-four for special permit under the town of Stoughton zoning bylaws of November eighteenth, two thousand fifteen, as amended. Section three point zero use regulations, three point three assesses uses, three point three point two special permit a detached accessory building or structure which exceeds nine hundred square feet of gross floor area or exceeds one point five stories, or exceeds twenty feet in height and shall require a special permit from the zoning board of appeals in order to construct a twenty-four by forty detached garage located at eighty McGee Avenue, further identified in assesses plan A, lot thirteen, in RC zone in Stoughton. Any person designed to receive further notice concerning this petition is provided by the general rules of the zoning board of appeal should file a written request containing his or her name and address with the board. Petitioner, his representative, or any other person designed to be heard in this matter should appear at time and place designated. Sherman O'Channon, who's in the Patriot Leger, September third and September tenth, two thousand twenty-four? Twenty-five? September third and September fifth, twenty twenty-five. I missed that.
Okay. Motion to waive the reading here, but it's in, take the answers to question eight as written. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Marguerite?
Hi.
Emile?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Mr. Mitchell? Would you like to explain what you want and what you, what you wanna do with this?
So, basically a storage for antique vehicles. I have five antique vehicles to store. So just building metal garage to store them. More or less, more for the winter, but all year round, from the weather.
Emile, can you hear? I couldn't hear any of that.
I didn't hear that.
You'll have to speak up a little bit. He, he, he wants to build a garage, but it's more for storage.
For antique vehicles.
For antique vehicles. Not gonna be repairing them on that?
No.
Okay, questions, Jeff?
You said another garage? Do we have a garage?
Yeah, I have a two-car garage, attached, so this is detached.
Will there be only one floor to the garage?
Yes, it's one floor.
Okay, any, um, water?
No.
Or electric, maybe electric service?
Maybe electric, yes. No water, no.
Okay, 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 okay. Um.
No water?
No.
Will you, do you have any plans with regards, like a driveway to the garage?
Uh, probably just a ramp to get the cars in. Always, as far as like the front, probably asphalt.
And will, do you plan to, to connect that to your existing driveway on the plan here, or?
Correct.
Or try and make another, or a larger, uh?
No, probably connect it to the driver, existing driveway.
Okay. Um, yeah. No other questions for me right now.
Gary?
I don't have any questions.
Marguerite?
I just wanna make sure I heard him correctly. Did you say no water, but yes to heat and electric?
Yes, no, no water. Just electric, no heat.
No heat?
No.
No water or heat, but yes to electric?
Yes.
And then you said that the, you'll connect to the existing driveway and use a ramp? Because otherwise, it looks like you might be going over your well.
Yes. No, the well is on the side.
Oh, is this going? The well appears to be again on, along the McGee Avenue, no?
But where the garage would be, the well is to the right.
This plan, it looks dead center. She's talking about this well here.
Yes, that's to the right.
Oh, to the right of your house, yeah. You just have to keep the driveway like ten feet from the well.
So do you have any problem with that being a condition?
No, not at all.
Okay, that's all I had.
Wow. Emile?
No questions?
It's, actually I have another question. So I, I'm just taking the town to kind of.
Is this something I'm committing on the property, three oh two School Street?
Is that?
Is this what I'm supposed to say? I got a letter.
Yeah, it's not gonna be heard tonight.
Oh, okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, October second.
October second.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
You know, so this, this, this request is just for a special permit. But I was looking at someone that mentioned on the plan. Does it, it seems to create some new, um, setback variances, and is that something that we need to address here, or can we issue a special permit without addressing those variances?
It's an extension restriction.
Access restriction, that's like.
Flattened fine.
Okay, yeah, I need, I need to read in the bylaws. But thank you. Okay. I'm gonna, sorry, no more questions for me.
Do you own these antiques?
Yes.
Not gonna be repairing other people's cars?
No. I own a body shop of my own, that I do my repairs.
Not gonna be doing body work in there?
No, absolutely not.
I don't need any competition. What kind of cars do you have?
Nineteen sixty-three Chevy Impala SS, nineteen sixty-six, nineteen sixty-two, nineteen sixty-one, that's like a part right now, and also I have a eighty-seven Volkswagen GTI.
Oh, you're gonna have that. You're not gonna put any lifts on it?
Um, if I did, it would be a four-post lift to, for storage.
So you can put one on, one on.
Exactly.
We didn't hear that question.
My question was, he wasn't gonna put any lifts in, but he, he's gonna put, he can put a lift in, but it's a four-post. And what it is, is you drive the car on, onto it, and you lift it, and then you can put another car under it. So instead of being like a four-car garage, you could end up with a eight-car garage. Oh, no water. You don't have gas down there? You got propane tanks?
Propane, yes.
To the house?
Yes.
Most of my questions were answered, okay. Anybody here have questions on it? Somebody? Okay. Have to identify yourself.
Do I have to go up and say?
No, you can speak from there, you just gotta speak up.
As long as we can hear you.
Okay, Hector Gernatos, five seventy-seven Pleasant Street? Do I make those conditions?
Need to script one, just.
Okay. Uh, I just had a question. Obviously, it's no, uh, no body shop, so it's no noise. That was my first question. And then, my other question was lighting. Could we just make sure the lighting doesn't point towards the five seventy-seven Pleasant Street? Which is diagonal.
You said Pleasant Street, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
This street, the, this street.
I know, it's at the end, I didn't realize it went up to Pleasant.
Yeah, it's right back.
Okay.
What exactly is that?
Uh, do you know the wooden area they cleaned up?
Yes.
Right behind that?
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's like directly diagonal.
Gotcha, okay.
So that's my only question, just make sure the lights don't.
Okay, so you will probably make a condition that the lights have to be down, downdraft, so it doesn't, you know. And, uh.
How do you wanna word that term?
What'd you say?
Down pointing lights.
I didn't hear you.
Make sure the lights point down.
Exterior lighting.
Oh, the exterior, yeah. And, uh, anybody else? Okay. What's the wish of the board?
Were those the only two conditions, or did you want anything in there about no repairs or auto body work?
That, that can go in there. That was, that was spoken about. Okay. Cause that changes the use, if you're doing repairs in there.
So the three conditions I had was, number one, any driveway, if constructed, must remain ten feet from the existing well. Number two, all exterior lights must point down. And number three, no repairs or auto body work in the garage.
Okay.
Does everyone, is that wording work for everybody?
Yep.
Okay.
Are you just gonna store in there, or?
Yeah, just store.
Okay.
There he has his own shop, so why would he?
When you're in your own shop, you do your own, you do everybody else's work, you don't do yours. You go home and do your own. Okay. What's the wish of the board?
Was that a motion, or was that just a?
I thought Marguerite was gonna make a motion.
Make a motion to approve with those three conditions.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Emile?
Hi.
Marguerite?
Hi. Who seconded that?
I did.
Thank you.
You, you had no problems with that?
No, we've had a bunch of conversations on it, no.
Okay. All, everybody, we're in favor, okay. We voted.
Right.
Uh, you're all set, but we'll draw a decision on this. We'll probably vote on it next meeting, which would be October second. And then you have, your neighbor, when he gets mad at you, is gonna, uh, and, and, uh, he has twenty-one days to complain. And, and then after that, you can talk to Mr. Erickson and.
Or in the meantime.
You can. Who?
They said, right, in the meantime, you can talk to him.
Oh, yeah, you can talk to him, and, and then you can get going on. Okay. Where's your shop?
Randolph Woodline Auto Body.
So my neighbor is your partner or something?
Your neighbor.
Uh, do you have a partner?
Anthony?
George's Chevy, uh.
Silverado?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Small, it's all set?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good luck.
It takes a process. Just talk to me and Kristen.
Will do. Thank you.
I think we have to.
We gotta do, Jen? Jenny, who's still there?
She made a lap.
Yeah, it looks like it.
Who?
The lawyer for thirty, forty-three thirty-five and thirty-six.
We're not gonna take any, uh?
No. So we gotta open the case, so we can. Motion to open case number forty-three thirty-five.
Second.
I'm, I'm gonna open them both together.
Then I'll second forty-three thirty-five.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor? Marguerite?
Hi.
Emile?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion to open case number forty-three thirty-six.
Second.
All in favor? Marguerite?
Hi.
Emile?
Hi.
Hi.
You gonna make it unanimous?
I see.
Oh, okay. All right. I have to read, you're done, right?
No, you just have to read this one. No, you don't have to read, we've not taken any testimony.
Okay. So, I will read, um, a letter from Mr. Roth.
No.
Oh, no, no.
No, no, no. A letter from Jen Allen.
From Jen Allen. Regarding three oh two School Street variance and special permit continuance request. In connection with the application of my client, Miguel Gomes, regarding the hearing for approval of a special permit and variance scheduled on September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, I respectfully request that the both hearings be continued to October second, two twenty-five. If there are any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me, Jennifer Allen.
Motion to continue cases number forty-three thirty-five and forty-three thirty-six to October second, twenty twenty-five, at seven thirty PM.
All in favor?
Hi.
Marguerite?
Hi.
Hi.
Gary? Jeff? Okay. Now we have, uh, now we have some decisions. Oh, you were on that one.
Yep.
Forty-three twenty-six. I twenty-eight.
Motion to open case number forty-three twenty-eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay.
You gotta ask them.
Marguerite?
She didn't sit on the case.
Hold on.
I'm not.
Yep.
Emile?
Hi.
Motion to accept the decision as written in case number forty-three twenty-eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Emile?
Hi.
Hi.
Come on immediately.
Motion to open case number forty-three twenty-nine.
Second.
All in favor? Emile?
Hi.
Gary?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Okay.
Motion to accept the decision as written in case number forty-three twenty-nine.
Second.
All in favor, Gary?
Hi.
Emile?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Motion to open case number forty-three thirty.
Second.
All, uh, all in favor? Emile?
Hi.
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Motion, motion to accept the decision as written in case number forty-three thirty.
Second.
All in favor? Emile?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Gary?
Hi.
Okay.
I didn't sit on the next case.
Okay. Um.
Motion to accept the decision in case number forty-three thirty-two as written.
You gotta open the case.
You have to open it first.
Open it. Sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. Not me, not me, not me.
Hi.
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 Okay, now you can.
Now, motion to accept the decision in case forty-three thirty-two as written.
Second.
Second.
Uh, Emile?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Aye.
So, Emile, you have to come in to sign these decisions? Can you come in here tomorrow between, before noon time?
Um, I don't know, but I will try.
If not, they'll have to wait till Monday.
Yeah.
So, do you need me to come in? Because I can't come in tomorrow or Monday.
Um.
Just report it to Jen.
Well, why don't you make a motion then to have Sherm sign for the, um, the board?
I'll have, make a motion for Sherm to sign on behalf of the board for case forty-three thirty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, go.
Okay, wait a minute, no, there should be three of these, right?
You can't make a motion on the other three. If you wanna do it on the other three, you have, someone else has to do that, but, thank you.
We already signed them?
Okay.
I mean, they're chicken cases, so they're. Not that they're any less important.
I feel like half of them were having chickens.
They, they have a bunch of chickens anyways.
I'm hearing all day tomorrow, Monday.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Yeah, I gotta wait.
You guys in October.
There you go.